Good evening. I'd like to, uh, call our meeting to order here again for Cadillac Planning Commission for November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. If you are able, please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please. Everybody?
Shippers. Host.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
Bunce.
Here.
Bascher.
Here.
Bauman.
Here.
Fent.
Here.
Van Pelt.
Here.
And Putman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this evening. Need approval of our agenda here again for November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second. Pick one.
All right, so I've got motion by Bauman, support by Rice, is that correct?
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Just trying to use your name on the paper.
Putman.
Yes.
Bascher.
Yes.
Bauman.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Bunce.
Yes.
Thank you.
And next for an approval, uh, October twenty-seventh meeting, again, twenty twenty-five, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Okay. Bascher and?
Bascher and Van Pelt.
Van Pelt, yes.
Bauman.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Bunce.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Bascher.
Yes.
Putman.
Yes.
And Host.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two public hearings this evening. Under A, we're after a special land use permit application filed by Nicholas LeTart, hopefully, to allow for short-term rental of a residential unit within the building at eight-twenty South Mitchell Street. Having read that, Teresa is going to, yes, take us there.
Well, thank you. Here tonight, we're going to be talking about this house located at eight-twenty South Mitchell Street. This is a special land use zoning permit application for a short-term rental here in Cadillac. Applicant and location. The applicant is Nicholas, who's in the audience. Eight-twenty South Mitchell Street. We have the parcel number and the zoning is B three, which is general business district. Request summary. Seeking approval for a special land use zoning permit. The purpose, to operate a furnished, short-term rental unit only on the upper level. Capacity would be up to possibly five guests. Short-term rentals are defined as furnished residential units rented for fewer than thirty consecutive days. The city council adopted an ordinance amendment to add short-term rentals as a use permitted, subject to special conditions in B three zone. A specific permit must be obtained, which requires the property to be reviewed by the planning commission to ensure it is appropriate in that location. This amendment brings the B three district in line with other zones such as TS dash one, TS dash two, B one, and B two, where short-term rentals are either permitted by right or allowed by, with special approval. So the surrounding by mix of residential and commercial properties. They have ample open space and setbacks on site. There's no impact on park areas or public recreational spaces. Utilities and infrastructure. Apartment includes modern utilities and in-unit laundry. They have existing water sewer. The infrastructure is sufficient. Site features. Level lot, no changes to existing grading. Parking and access routes comply with the city. Private rear entrance on the second level, and it's going to be also accessible via deck. Site plan overview. Zoning allows for mixed residential, commercial uses with approval. The site plan shows building location, a parking approximately fifty-five by thirty, and access. It's a clear separation from neighboring properties, ensures privacy. Compliance and some findings. The site plan meets B three district standards for short-term rental and sufficient onsite parking, no negative impact on public infrastructure. So property history. Building previously used for residential purposes on upper floor, and there was commercial on the main floor. There is no outstanding code violations and no prior special use permits for short-term rentals at this address. Decisions and next steps. Planning commission will approve or deny the request. Staff finds the application aligns with the zoning in the city's comprehensive plan. Recommended action, motion to approve or deny the variance as presented, supported by, with, or without conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Uh, do I want Nicholas to come up before I open public hearing, or have him come up after? I don't know. Flipping a coin. Uh, let's go ahead and open public hearing first, and then that way Nick can hear everything. Nick, are you happy how it was presented?
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay.
We'll keep things moving.
So at this time, I'll open public hearing. So anyone here to speak for or against, um, Nick's project here, which he's done a great job at. Your photos were great.
Yeah.
Um, fixing that up to be a short-term rental. So anyone wishing to address that, please come forwards. State your name, write down your address, and we're all ears for you. Okay. Hello, Linda.
Hi, I'm Linda Durant, and, uh, that, that building in that place, there shouldn't be anybody complaining about it. I mean, there's nothing right around it, and I think all of you know how I feel about short-term rentals. Our, our town needs them in the right places with rules. They, the people that stay there, they really help our small businesses on Main Street. They go to restaurants. We all go to restaurants, but we don't go to restaurants every night. And short-term rental people, they don't come here to cook. They're out seeing our town, and I think it's a good idea. So I'm all for it. You're welcome. I'm not complaining about anything.
We listen.
I'm Tony Tenello. I just have one question. Are you going to be living downstairs?
Sure. Um, yes, I have a-
You gotta ask us.
Pardon me?
We'll let him respond.
Okay.
So you just give me your opinion of this, please.
Oh, I, I think it's a good place for, for the-
Thank you, Tony.
I just had that one question.
We'll, we'll get that answered. Okay. Okay. Anyone else this evening? Okay. Seeing no one else, we will close public hearing at this time, and we'll discuss this. I do have a quick question though, Tony.
Do you want Nick to stand up?
Do you want to input anything and respond to a question?
Um, y- yeah, to, to-
Can you go up to the podium?
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So at this time, I'm still in public hearing. I'll let you chat.
Um, yeah, to answer this gentleman's question here, um, I will be onsite living. This is my only property. Um, what I, I made a living quarters down on the basement level, and I've been building on the main level, um, trying to open a wellness business, which I'm hoping to get going here in the next few weeks to a month. I'm very, very close. I've been working on it for several years. Um, I started with working on the upstairs apartment and, uh, in hopes of starting, uh, short-term rental quite some time ago, uh, with the zoning, uh, kerfuffles that have happened. I wasn't able to do it for quite some time, but, um, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that, um, pushed this through to, uh, making it possible for me to apply for a special use, uh, because I wasn't able to do so before. Um, so I'm grateful for that. Um, and yeah, um, the, the short-term rental, um, I'm hoping is gonna kind of be a cohesive, um, uh, kind of completion to, uh, complement, uh, my business, complement tourism, and, um, I do, I have experience, uh, managing short-term rentals, um, and I've been in hospitality most of my life, so, um, I will be like twenty-four-seven on call, um, and if I'm not there, I, um, I'll, I'll have a, a property manager to fill my spot, but I, I plan on being there the majority of the time, and, uh, yeah, taking care of any issues that, that may arise, or answering any questions about the town that, uh, that a guest might have. So, and I think that'll, that'll wrap it up pretty much.
Before I part with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Where's the sauna? I read something about sauna by appointment, and, but I didn't see nothing in the pictures, so I had-
So if you, if you look at the house, or right behind you, or, uh, over here, so the fenced in area, the privacy fence in the back, uh, the wooded fence,
Yep.
Uh, it's right in that back corner there. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, which will also be an option for, for guests, like pending, uh, waivers and, uh, you know, liabilities and, and things like that, so.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'll close public hearing. Any thoughts, board members?
It's a great place for it.
Yep.
It's not gonna bother anybody.
Nobody.
Done some serious interior decorating.
Yep.
So, question, this will be our first, correct, uh, for the, since we've added this as a special use?
Agreed, yes, sir.
Um, so I just want to make sure that we outline, or kind of set down the, the guidelines, you know, moving forward for future ones. Are we going to have, um, similar to the one we granted, uh, downtown? Are we going to have a, a review, uh, process? Just make sure that we lay it out like we want. Um, maybe futures to go.
Agreed. Good idea.
And in the packet here, it's, he's laid out all what he plans on doing and regulating and following protocol for having a short-term rental. Which seems reasonable.
And are you referencing, like, like in the staff, the review and the staff findings?
Uh, this is-
Yeah, he had his own.
It's where he has his short-term rental rules is what he's got.
Okay.
One here is right after the letter that he, that he submitted.
I think Greg wanted to know, do we have a formal review process? Did, did we implement anything like that? Is that what you're asking, Greg?
Yeah.
We did discuss that with a park-
The address there.
Park place.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Correct.
Okay, we, we have a process, policy for that?
We can.
Well, I know we did discuss-
Right, we did discuss that.
The need for that.
Correct.
I, if I could just jump in.
Sure, Marcus.
Just to try to help clarify, you know, your, your zoning code is rather robust, and you have, um, several things that you approve or you consider to approve by way of a special use permit. And so that, that whole administrative review process that the experts go through for any of those items is the same for this type of use as it would be for any other special use permitting type item. So there, there isn't like a separate set of rules or guidelines, because every thing that the planning commission ultimately would consider to approve a special use permit for may be very unique and special in and of itself based upon location, type of special use, and other factors. And so it's not, it's not going to necessarily be a, you know, a, a, right, a, a mold or a template that will work with all of it.
Well, in particular, just a question for staff. While Nick has a set of rules here, it's not as though the special use permit is subject to him actually complying with his own rules, right?
Correct.
Unless it were to become some sort of, um, nuisance or other-
Or complaint-based, or, right.
Otherwise violate the zoning code or-
Right.
Yeah.
And then just to follow up on that, Mr. Bauman, uh, as this particular board is aware, when I say that, I mean, members. Planning commission has, within your own recent history, had to revoke a special use permit. And so there is a protocol and a process for that. Again, regardless of what the use may be, it's the same, you know, issues, if there's enforcement issues, you know, internally, we would then write a report and bring it to commission for consideration of action, so.
And the fire department will be going out and doing their due diligence on checking those things, so.
Is there a standard for that?
The fire department has a standard, yes.
We're not currently part of it, though.
Oh, we're not for short-term?
Short-term is not currently a part of our rental program. We are working with that as part of the zoning code rewrite.
That makes sense.
And licensing programs.
But maybe if we work with the applicant and he would okay them to come in, just to make sure that he's done his due diligence, maybe we could put that as part of a condition, right?
I thought it stated that that was done?
I, I did, um, have them come in, well, when I had a long term, so.
Yeah.
So that was when you had a regular rental? So that's just every three years.
And that should be good for three years, right?
That's just every three years, so, yeah.
But since we haven't written that yet, are the people that have been approved going to be subject to that, or will they be grandfathered in?
They would probably-
If a new ordinance or is written, they would be subject to it once that is passed through council.
Depending upon what we decide. And council decides.
Yep.
Yes.
And then just clarification, this runs with the property, not just the owner, correct?
Correct.
Good, good point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Want to change it, let's change it.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the special use permit as requested by the applicant as outlined in the staff report and as proposed by staff.
Second.
Second.
That was a motion by Bauman, support by Host.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Bauman.
Yes.
Bunce.
Yes.
Host. Putman.
Yes.
Bascher.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay. Our second public hearing tonight is the application filed by Jennifer and Brian Haney requesting that the four oh seven East Chapin Street be conditionally rezoned from R three to RM one on the condition that the subject property be used only as a single-family home or a bed and breakfast, subject to a special land use approval. Um, tonight, uh, so, the one just before this, that wa- did not go onto council, that was our decision. Tonight, this one does get forwarded to council, and we'll let staff explain other details after that. But having read this, Teresa, please.
All right, thank you. So welcome again. Um, conditional rezoning request. This is for four oh seven East Chapin Street. Today's date, and Jennifer and Brian Haney are the applicants. So we have the subject property. Want to remind everybody that this is a historical landmark. The Frank J. Cobb's house was built in eighteen ninety-eight and designed by George Mason. The current use is a single-family home, historically served as an apartment for nearly thirty years. Proposed use, bed and breakfast, or continued single-family residence. The legal lots are listed there. The rezoning request. Conditional rezoning from R three, single two-family resident, to RM one, multifamily residential. Proposed conditions. Property allowed as one single-family home or two bed and breakfast with special land use permit. Historical preservation. Recognizing this contribute site is a city and state historical surveys. It's on the historical registry. They're collaborating closely with the historical district commission. And the historical district, um, commission supports the project in citing preservation of architectural and historical integrity. The bed and breakfast details. Defined as an owner-occupied residence with up to eight rooms for transient guest. Proposed is three en-suite guest rooms. They will be living on site, and circular driveway provides dedicated parking for guests. Neighborhood and zoning context. Area features a mix of residential types. Property serves as a natural transition between low-density neighborhoods and vibrant city center. Conditional rezoning allows municipalities to tailor permission with voluntary binding restrictions. There's the parcel, address four oh seven, that is in blue, outlined in blue. There's a beautiful picture of the home. Compatibility and appropriateness. One, compatible with surrounding land use in city-owned districts. Two, aligns with the goals of the city master plan, supporting housing, variety, adaptive re- reuse in historical property. Three, public facilities. We have utilities, roads, safety can accommodate proposed use. Public space and amenities. Mature landscape, covered porch, attractive guests, amenities, walking distance to Lake Cadillac and nearby parks. So your review process. The application was, was reviewed by city staff and planning commission. Next, the public hearing for resident feedback. Next, planning commission recommendation. Then it will go to city council, public hearing, and final decision. And that city council public hearing would be in January. The applicant intends full compliance with zoning, health, and fire codes. No plans for short-term rentals, example of Airbnb. Target opening would be spring of twenty twenty-six, pending approvals. Conditional rezoning explained. It's a flexible tool for negotiated zoning changes. Only allows change with agree voluntary restrictions. Conditions become legally binding for current and future owners. Address concerns about stop, spot zoning through enhanced regulations. So my summary. Number one, proposal preserves, restores the historical home while boosting local tourism. Two, consistent with Cadillac's planning and economic development goals. Three, condition serves both public interest and applicant's goals. And four, staff recommends approval contingent on outlined conditions. So your next step, planning commission to make a recommendation, approve or deny the city council. If approved, applicant to seek special land use permit for bed and breakfast operation. So property allowed as single-family home, bed and breakfast with special land use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Any questions for staff? Everybody good? Okay. At this time, we'll go ahead then and open the public hearing pertaining to the four oh seven East Chapin Bed and Breakfast. Anyone wishing to say anything about it, good or bad, please come forwards. I think everybody was here during the first time, and they said their piece, so everybody was on board for it, so, okay.
And the applicant does have their presentation, if you'd like them to come up and give that.
Everybody good with that?
Sure.
Sure you want it, or no you don't want it?
Same as last, same presentation, or?
Okay. So, now, do you have anything to add before I close this, then?
Um, if you don't, I mean, I, not if you, if you feel like you've seen it.
We're, it's all fresh in our minds. Pictures and all. Okay, okay. So at this time, I will close public hearing. We thank you. And, okay. We found a way to get there.
Yeah.
Yep.
For them, okay.
Questions for staff? As you were working through this, um, are you seeing any, were there any hurdles, any, any issues that we were going to be facing, you know, with this conditional? This is kind of a new thing for us.
Right. I think we're in a better position than what we were before. This is a great avenue to come to this point. Um, I have not seen anything. Have you seen anything in our office? No.
No.
And it is something new.
I'm the staff liaison for the historic district, so there were no red flags for them either, other than the, the conditional, which we, those comments are in your packet, which we received from one of our board members.
And, um, council is on, it, something like this, do they draft exactly what this looks like, how this is worded?
We would have our attorney draft that up.
We have a resolution.
Yep, and we have a resolution here. If it does pass, we'll have that signed.
Okay.
And then if, if council then approves what we forwarded, then they come back to us yet?
Yes.
Okay.
And is it special use permit?
Yes.
Yes, after that, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Ready?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of conditional zoning of the subject property from R three to RM one, on the condition that the subject property be used only as a single-family home or a bed and breakfast, the latter being subject to special land use approval at four oh seven East Chapin Street. Uh, is based upon the staff report, uh, the comments or lack thereof here at the meeting, um, and any other relevant discussion here at the meeting.
Van Pelt.
Bascher.
Yes.
Bunce.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Putman.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Bauman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. New business being done, old business done. Communications, this is coming back to Teresa, I think. So-
Yes.
Zoning code rewrite update educational session.
Yes, um, just reminding everyone that we welcome anyone to stop in at, uh, our educational session that we're going to have at the Wellfield office. That is going to be December third, which is a Wednesday, at five P M. And that is to, again, re, uh, go over the zoning code rewrite, rewrite, and Progressive will be there attending, and we'll be talking about the zoning rewrite, and then we're also going to have- And then we're also going to have some stations, so you'll be able to discuss what topics interest you, any questions that you have, and the whole process of it.
So this is a little different than the one that we went to in the morning?
Yes.
About a takeoff of that?
Yep, correct.
Okay. Okay. And December third, five PM, so that's the card, ma'am, that you got, that you asked me about is about that. Okay. So you were just updating this, that's the date and the time?
Correct.
Perfect.
And then the next comment.
Yes.
Uh, December meeting date. All I'm doing is is asking if we could confirm tonight that everybody's going to be able to make it for the December. That is December twenty-second.
The Monday before Christmas.
Yep, Monday before Christmas. We just wanted to make sure that we would have a quorum. We have two things going to be on the agenda, so.
Should be.
Should be okay, I guess.
Good.
The consensus, okay?
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
And you're having treats for us and all that, right?
We get our bonus.
We'll be here.
John, we get our bonus.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a bonus?
We get our bonus.
That's Christmas bonus, that, right?
Okay, wow. We'll be here.
Double last year's.
Uh, board member comments, anyone?
Good work, everybody.
Yeah, I'm glad we got that done.
Perfect.
Progress.
Any public comment? Seeing none, other business none.
Move to adjourn.
I'm all about it and everyone have a great Thanksgiving. We're out.